It'll come up. Come on.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody. We're going to call to order the March 10th meeting of the Board of Commissioners at 10:00 a.m. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Seeing no one here for public comment, we're going to move to the approval of our minutes for Tuesday, March 3rd.
Motion to approve the minutes from the Tuesday, March 3rd Board of Commissioners meeting.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried and minutes are approved. Okay. We have a guest with us today, our own Deb Homan, from our Adult Services office, who works very closely with the food pantries, and we'd be happy to have you join us, Deb, and talk a little bit about why you're here and, yeah. Good morning.
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 Thanks for having me here today. Hi, I'm Deb Homan with Adult Services, and we were contacted by the State College Area School District Union Council. Apparently, there's about 150 members of that, and they were hoping to have someone present here today to present a check, but that unfortunately did not work out today. The check will be in the amount of $2,000. So just an overview about how the food pantries work, there are eight here in Center County. So each part of that encompasses the entire county. So we do have a sheet available, as well as a map that's color-coded, so if you live in Bellefonte Borough, it would show you where to go by color and area. So it's colors, townships, and boroughs. So there are also two emergency food pantries, one of which is Center House in State College at HTI, and Center Help. So they're open 24/7, and anybody can go in there at any time. Emergences can be somebody just getting out of the hospital, going home, and not having food to eat. So how our office is involved and what the Center County food pantries means is, we receive state food purchase program grant funding from the state. For '18-'19 fiscal year, we actually received $85,531. That was just food purchased for our county. And then we also receive federal funding, which is commodity-based, and that can vary a lot. For '18-'19, that was $27,321. So it's a significant amount of money. We get the call frequently in our office, why do some pantries have more food than others? The reason being is only certain food can be purchased with state and federal funds. So people like the State College School District, our grocery stores that donate food, the postal drive, Boy Scout Drive, Toys for Tots Drive, they all contribute, and that's why some pantries have more than others. Three of our pantries actually are all volunteer-run, and the other ones are volunteer and staff-based. So on behalf of all the people that do donate, we do want to thank you. It makes a huge difference for our residents here, and there still is a need. So that's really all I have, unless you have questions.
Well, no, we really want to thank the union at the school district. Do we know if it's AFSCME, if it's PSEA, or whoever that is? Maybe we can, at a future meeting, we can discuss, or...
They said they do not have a check available yet they wanted to present, but since there's so many members, they were hoping to do something on their own, but they would also be glad to come back and present a check. He said it was number 259, and it was Nigel Wilson that contacted our office, so...
If an individual or a group would like to collect food or donate food, are there any specific items that are particularly short or desirable that maybe the state program doesn't provide for?
That's a very good question, and mostly it's food that they can purchase with state and federal funds that's shelf-stable. So it's boxed food, and as we know, you know, they encourage people to eat fresh today. So with purchases they can make on their own, they can fit their own pantry needs, such as eggs, milk, maybe meats. Paper products cannot be purchased with that, so there are always items that we have to buy and can use, so that would be helpful.
So if individuals would want to contribute, those are some of the items that might more effectively be useful.
Yes.
Okay.
And they can reach out to the Center County website under Adult Services, and there's a website that would give them information. And please encourage people to use it, the food's there. If we don't have enough people, the funds do drop from year to year, so it is important that they're used.
Deb, I know we're having a run on toilet paper right now, but do some of the local food pantries take toiletries like, say, toothpaste, toothbrushes, toilet paper, et cetera?
They sure do. Anything that they don't have to buy with their own money is helpful. So if somebody qualifies for SNAP benefits, they automatically qualify for the food banks, and you can use both. A family of four yearly income would be $38,625. So, I mean, there's a guideline. I'll put some papers on the back if anybody has questions, but that information would be available there, and they can always contact our office as well.
And your phone number is?
Thanks for the good news.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that, and that'll certainly go to good use, so, thank you, Deb. Appreciate it very much. Okay. All right. Okay. Thanks, Deb. Next, under contracts, we're going to welcome up Natalie to discuss an agreement, letter of agreement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have before board a letter of agreement with Peerstar to establish for referrals. So Peerstar is an agency while we did not contract with, is, does our peer services. So for us, it's really important that individuals who have an interest in working with a certified peer specialist, as they are called for us, you know, has options in our community. And so Peerstar is one of those agencies that is located throughout several counties. I know they're over in Huntington County and some of our connecting counties to do peer services. And so this is an opportunity, if we have an individual who wants to connect with another peer, and Peerstar has a peer that they would be a good forming relationship with, then this agreement allows us to do that.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions for Natalie? Hearing none, is our motion?
Motion to add the letter of agreement with Peerstar LLC to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. Thanks, Natalie.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to welcome up Chad for two items. Good morning, Chad.
Good morning. First item I have is a contract for consideration with Sterilcycle. They provide secure, sorry, secure onsite shredding of our documents to various buildings, courthouse, MDJ offices, Willow Bank. Average monthly costs will come in somewhere around $1,100, not to exceed $19,000 for 2020. This is a three-year contract running from April 1st, 2020, to March 31st, 2023.
All right, thank you, Chad. Any questions on that one?
Actually, I do. I think, as I recall, there are certifications or certain standards at which shredding companies have to meet for...
Yep.
Does this include background checks and all those other certifications?
This does. We vetted, I think, four different companies to, one, get, you know, pricing, but also the reputation of certification as well. So this does include the certifications needed for onsite shredding of secure...
I'm unfamiliar with this company, that's why I was...
They're probably more familiar known as Shred It. I don't know if you've seen their trucks driving around, but that is their parent company.
Okay.
And they do other municipalities and, like, health facilities and stuff as well, so they're...
Thank you. Chad, and on the other one.
Yeah, so the contract is with SHI International to provide a VMware license and support for emergency communications. This contract is for $24,573.07, and includes a one-time expense of $20,641.56, with the annual cost of the VMware support at $3,931.51. This is a higher level of support for emergency communication facilities than what previously had.
All right. Thanks, Chad. Any questions? Hearing none, there'll be a motion.
Motion to add the contract with SteriCycle, also known as Shred It, and SHI International to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. Are you staying up? Oh, you're good. Okay, great. Okay. All right, so we're going to welcome up Sue Hanigan to discuss some policies we've been discussing in our policy committee. Good morning, Sue.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, and thanks to Chad, who is here too, to take part in this discussion. We are asking your consideration for two new information technology policies. They are the identity and access management policy and patch management. They're designed to increase our security on our computer services, and Chad can provide more details.
Yeah, identity and access management policy revolves around the provisioning and de-provisioning of accounts, so we can ensure that employees who need access have the access that they need, but don't have any additional access. De-provisioning of accounts to ensure when someone leaves our employment, that their access is removed. We go on least privilege mode, so you have the least amount of privilege that you need to, necessary to do the job you have.
So you're not setting everybody up as the systems administrator?
Correct. Not everyone, just most people.
Okay.
And with that, is there's two forms that we've been using for quite some time now, a new user form that department head will fill out, let myself and HR know what access they need, and then the same with the departing, let us know when employee leaves, the date they're going to leave, so we can turn off their access. And then the next policy is patch management, really just proactive measures around security updates, mitigating vulnerabilities, setting sort of standards around doing that.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? Just giving one final review to this.
I'm assuming that most of the patch management will be done by RBA staff?
Yes, it is. Most of it's already being done in the format that's in the policy, it's just to really kind of formalize a policy around it.
Tighten things up a little bit.
Yep. Yes.
Sue always writes great policies.
Well, Chad is the primary author of the information technology policies. He brings expertise that I can't match, so all credit goes to Chad.
I'm surprised. I'm surprised.
Can I just add that we go over these carefully with our RBA or our vendors, so that we're all on the same page? And as Chad said, especially with respect to patch management, most of these procedures are in place. This is an effort to just formalize them in a written format, so that we have a reference point going forward.
Okay. And for the identity and access management, every two years, that will be reviewed, and then the patch management will be an annual review of that. Any further discussion, questions on these two items? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the identity and access management policy and patch management policy to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, today's consent agenda is in front of us. Would be a motion to approve.
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. And we'll turn it over to Margaret for the liquid fuels items.
Yes, thank you very much. This morning, we have a payment and an application. The first item is a payment in the amount of $30,000 to Ferguson Township for a pedestrian and safety improvements project at West College Avenue and Coral Street. And the second item is an application to PennDOT from Penn Township to install guide rails on the Siglerville Milheim Pike, and that is in the amount of $22,000. So we'll look for approval for those two items.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Would be a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the liquid fuels payment to Ferguson Township and submission of the Penn Township application to PennDOT.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay. All right, moving into our discussion items, we're going to welcome up Ray to give us an update where we stand on CPACE. Morning, Ray.
Good morning. So way back in November of last year, I came in front of the Board of Commissioners to present the CPACE program, Act 30 of 2018, to discuss low-cost, long-term financing for energy-efficient projects for existing and for new construction. That program has been adopted by at least nine counties by this point, the latest being Lehigh County, I believe. And in the meantime, I've met with Holly Ettinger from Sustainable Energy Fund. She had updated me on meeting with a few property owners in Center County regarding energy-efficient projects, looking at options without CPACE being in place. So she had given me that update, and we made some suggestion to get out there in front of our municipalities to present information on the CPACE program, so they have a better understanding of it, and do a similar presentation. We would have Holly there to answer questions on any financing options that are out there under CPACE, and then we would have Mark Kellerman there to answer any questions with regards to the billing process, because a lien is placed on property, and with any transfer, that lien is carried over. So billing is done for these projects through the county tax process, and that's part of the CPACE program, and what counties are involved versus the municipalities. So we want to get out there and try to get a presentation, see what kind of support there is to promote this project, and then see if there's any other questions that may be there that people don't understand about the program. And that's where we're at.
It sounds like a good opportunity for us to have a final round of input from some of the local stakeholders before we do anything, putting this into place or not. So it gives us a good opportunity just to put our ear to the ground. Yeah, absolutely.
And, I mean, I like the program, because it makes it just a little bit easier for companies and municipalities to start a green energy project. Our solar project is looking to be very successful. We were out at Burke Holders Market yesterday, and he's been very happy with his solar carport project. I think, at least currently, it's still the largest privately-owned one in the state. So, yeah, I'm, in general, supportive of the CPACE program because of what its goals are.
The other person I met since the presentation, Pam Adams from Center Region Planning Agency. She's a sustainability planner, and she's also dealing with municipalities and questions with regards to promoting green energy. And we met, and I kind of gave her a rundown of what CPACE was all about. So Pam would like to be involved with any type of informational meeting, especially for the Center Region municipalities that I think have a high interest in this. I had some questions from local government. Harris Township's building a new building. Harris called and asked if they would be eligible under the CPACE program, and we got in touch with Holly. Unfortunately, government entities are not eligible for this, so Harris Township has their answer now, and they can move forward and look for other options for financing. So there's interest from all ends. I think, and the interesting one would be agriculture, because that's eligible use, and we would probably want to get out there to get information out to farmers and see if there can be some energy efficiencies that they could take advantage of.
Okay, thanks, Ray. Sounds good. Any questions, discussion on this? No action of meaning today, but we'll be looking forward to an informational meeting for some of the potential stakeholders, so, yeah, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Ray before he departs? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ray. Okay. Moving into our ABCs, we want to look for a motion to reappoint Nancy Rommel and Roger Cartwright to the Central Pennsylvania Community Action Board, and also recognize the term expiration for Deanna Baring as well.
Motion to approve the ABC reappointments and term expiration.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. Okay, we'll go to the check run then.
All right. We have a smaller-than-usual check run of $582,846.37, and the check of the week is to the Center County Fire Chiefs Association, $10,000, which is their 2020 allocation. Generally, I believe it's used for training purposes for the local volunteer firefighters. We very much appreciate all they do, and while I think we were at Burke Holders yesterday, there was quite a large grass fire in Penn's Valley, and every couple minutes, a fire truck would go by. Just remind you that even in the middle of the day, we have our volunteer firefighters and fire police who will jump away from their job, fight the fire, and then go back to work. We also appreciate the employers they work for who allow them to do that. So I would like to make the motion to approve the check run dated March 6th.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion is carried. All right, so we're going to move into a sponsorship of a bulletin board message for the Center County Conservation District annual seedling sale. We were just taking a quick look at this, but this CNET message would be for some terrific Stanley...
Black pears and stuff?
Absolutely.
Those are all just trees?
Oh, trees, absolutely.
That's more than just seedling. That's what I was looking for.
Oh, say again. Yeah, trees as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But you can get a Bartlett pear tree there, Gold Rush apple, Liberty apple, Harrods sweet pear, so many, many things to take advantage of with the 2020 seedling sale, so...
Yeah, I think the drop dead date for ordering is the end of the month.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's ordered by March 27th.
March 27th, okay.
You better get moving.
So this will be the final word to get out to folks, and some reasonable prices as well.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. And it goes to benefit the work of the Conservation District. So would there be a motion for that?
Motion to approve the CNET sponsorship for the Center County Conservation District seedling sale.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion has carried. Okay. All right, we'll turn over to Commissioner Durschen.
Okay, we have a voter registration report this morning. We have 109,275 registered voters. That's up five voters from last report. There are 46,274 Democratic voters, 151 Green Party, 673 Libertarian, 14,583 No Affiliation, and 42,847 Republican voters. That leaves the All Others category at 4,747. So that being said, of that 4,747, just going alphabetically, the next one on my list is the Bipartisan Party. And the Bipartisan Party has one voter, so split loyalties.
Oh.
Now, I'll move to the featured precinct of the week, which is Patton South One. They voted the Park Forest United Methodist Church. In the last election, there were 926 registered, total registered voters, 380 ballots cast, which leads to a percentage turnout of 41.06. So we want to thank the Patton Township folks for, or the Park Forest United Methodist Church for allowing us to use their facility, but the folks that make it happen, the precinct 66, the judge of elections is Richard Mayer, minority inspector is Douglas Glanert, majority inspector is Raymond Lightner, the clerks are Barton Browning, Alice Browning, Judy Reed, and I think that might, yep, that's the end of the report. So again, we want to thank the folks at the church for allowing us to use their facility, and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Sounds good. All right, thank you, Steve. All right. Wanted to give a brief update, turn over to Margaret for a COVID-19 update, just in terms of county preparation.
Sure, certainly. Well, first, the county continues to closely monitor the COVID-19 situation. We are in touch with the Department of Health updates that are coming to us and looking to them for guidance. We continue to collaborate with local municipalities. We're participating with the Center Region's Infectious Hazards Planning Group, which includes representatives from Mount Nettie Hospital, the school district, the university. And later today, I will be meeting with Bellefonte Borough representatives to share information about how we're approaching this. The county has established a COVID-19 planning team, which is looking at situational assessments, so that as this evolves, we can make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners about any action that needs to take place. We have provided guidance to our own employees. We are encouraging them to use the Department of Health site as a good reference point. It's been added to our website, and we internally here have initiated disinfecting sweeps of our three major buildings, the Willow Bank, courthouse, courthouse annex, and are distributing supplies through our facilities management office, so that all of our offices have the supplies they need for the purpose of really keeping our offices clean and safe for employees and the visiting public, and to slow the progression of this in whatever responsible ways we can. So that's where we are today.
Thank you, Margaret. It's important, in terms of, we just return to this time and time again, in terms of our continuity of operations, so we'll keep our staff and our citizens as healthy as possible, so thank you.
Any executive sessions for us to report?
No.
Okay.
I do have one item before we adjourn. I believe the Executive Board of the Center County Youth Detention Center will be announcing, or at least offering, a job offer to the new executive director, who we've been on a pretty copious search for over the last several months, on this Friday. So I will be asking for both of your proxy votes for that to occur on Friday, so we can get that moving. The process has been laborious, and the Department of Health, or I guess it's Department of Human Services, rather, has a process in which they must approve that applicant, and so I think we are ready to make a recommendation on Friday, so hopefully we can get that resolved and get a new chain of command up there.
Jim's been with the center for decades.
Yes.
And provided able leadership, but looking for a successor has been a challenge.
Oh, it's been, yes, but I just thought I'd make you aware that that's coming up. As soon as I get the proxy forms, I'll get them to you.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for us, or any, anything? Please. No, no, it's, no.
Margaret, is the county looking at scenarios in case public buildings, courthouse, Willow Bank, whatever, would have to be closed down? Are you looking at that at all?
We are looking at all different types of scenarios. The recommendations that would be made regarding continuity of operations obviously have to be done on a situation-by-situation, case-by-case, location-by-location basis. So we are talking about the what-ifs, and continuing to put some contingency plans around those possible scenarios.
Are there any changes in visitation policies at the prison?
Not as of yet.
We are getting daily updates from Penn State on their options, and they keep talking about the possibility of digital and online. Is the county involved in any of their discussions, the university?
We participate as part of the Infectious Hazards Planning Group. The university is at the table for that, and we'll be hearing more from them, but we receive reports as the rest of you do.
Steve, the issues that we've talked about previously, Youth Detention Center, have they kind of resolved themselves, or do you still have some issues?
There's been, there's been a lot of discussion, and I believe we're going to be cleaning up those discussions when the new executive director is appointed, and we can get the new policies and everything ironed out, but obviously, we would want that new director to be part of that discussion. So I think, you know, stay tuned, but a lot of the issues have been resolved, and I think we've gotten policies in place now, you know, in the interim, but we want to firm them up with the new director.
Do you still have kids referred there with some type of drug issues, or is there some place else that they've been going first?
I think it has happened, and I think there's different protocols now to... I think it has happened and I think there's different protocols now to deal with that and so far, there hasn't been any issues and we've been able to handle it pretty effectively.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, we look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 10:28.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're adjourned.